Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 18th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand.
Dear Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you've provided for us. Thank you for keeping us safe from harm. Lord, be with us this evening as we discuss the county's business. Help us to make the best decisions that we can for our citizens, for their quality of life. Dear Lord, just be with all those throughout our nation, those who are going through the difficult times. Bless them and keep them from any undue harm. Dear Lord, we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Move to the public comment session. Been, three people have requested to speak. First is Eddie Cave.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Eddie Cave. I live over in Beaver Dam One Community. And I would like to thank you guys for allowing me three minutes to make a request to y'all. I have been digging into this Haywood County neighborhood denunciation tax rate ordeal that's been going on. And all the information that the county had on there that is used to evaluate our homes and to set the prices for which we pay, the appraisals for which we pay taxes, has been taken off of line. In other words, you cannot see this information anymore. And there've been many public requests I have got up here about a year ago was the last time I requested it. I have a whole folder full of emails of people that requested this information. But basically, the Haywood County denunciation, neighborhood denunciation tax rates, the county has got over 900, at last count, when these maps were actually online, over 900 neighborhoods circled, divided up. And I have been told that there's over 1,000 now, that these are continually changing, these neighborhoods. I've understand that these neighborhoods, there's 59,000 people in the county, and they's right close to 1,000 neighborhoods that's been circled on the Haywood County map. You understand the reason that approximately, on average, about 59 to 60 people would live in each circle. But it's been brought to our attention that some circles have as few as three people living in them with the same last name. The reason this is important is because each one of these neighborhood circles on the map has a different tax rate. And it goes anywhere from 65% to 200%. A good example of this would be if you had a $100,000 home that the county appraised for $100,000, then if you was down on the old Iceville Highway where the denunciation tax rate is only 65%, you would only have to pay taxes on $65,000. But if your $100,000 home was over in one area in Lake Dunleavy where it's 200%, then you would have to pay taxes on $200,000, 100% more than what your home is valued at. I know I started digging into this in 2011 when my home went from like $35,000 up to I've been trying to get this public information, and it is public information, back online for well over a year now. This is information that's used to access how much tax we, the citizens of Haywood County, paid. And I know a similar thing happened down in Mecklenburg County, and they ended up having to pay a whole bunch of people back with interest. But we've got to address this, this big ordeal with this neighborhood denunciation tax rate. And the people of this county need to be able to look on the map and to say, "I'm being charged 100% more than my home's worth," or "I'm being charged 35% less than my home's worth," possibly based on that last name.
Next up is Ellen Pitt. Evening.
I would say ladies and gentlemen, but we're missing the women. This November, one of the most important elections in western North Carolina will take place. A lot of elections are going to be important, but to us in particular, the District Attorney for the 30th Prosecutorial District, as you know, does not represent just Haywood County. He or she will represent the seven most western counties and is in fact, the most geographically challenged District Attorney in the state. In addition to that challenge, the DA's office is generally understaffed and underfunded. The person who is elected must be a staff supervisor of a scattered staff, a good steward of public funds, an investigations resource, a public safety advocate, a teacher, a trainer, a leader. But most importantly of all, that person has to be a dedicated and diligent crime fighter, an enforcer of the laws that are passed by the voting, taxpaying public, otherwise known as the state. We have two excellent candidates campaigning for this office. If you know both of them thoroughly enough to vote in this election, raise your hand. A lot of people don't even know who Mr. Bonfoy is. They've had no reason to be involved in the criminal justice system or the judicial process. So if you say, "Who's the District Attorney?", they don't know who it is. They don't even know his name. They don't know the name of either one of these candidates, or that there's two candidates. So we are going to host a debate slash community forum. It's going to be very community oriented so that the community at large can meet both candidates and ask any questions that are appropriate and that they feel like they need to ask. That'll be screened by a moderator, who is an attorney from Asheville, and he knows, he's a prosecutor himself, so he knows what they can and can't answer because they're both still acting prosecutors. So we're very proud to be able to do this for the entire district, and all of the district is invited to this event. The event will be at 2:00 PM at the Colonial Theater in Canton on September 28th. That's a Sunday afternoon, and that's for the convenience of the candidates. It will end at 4:00 and be followed by a reception. And we'd really like to see you join us, and please invite your civic groups or any other interested parties that you think might want to be involved in the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Denny King. And in the Mountaineer article, "County Wins Tax Appeal," Vicki Hyatt stated that the court appeal has been settled in the county's favor. Really? The North Carolina Court of Appeals has sent the case back to the Property Tax Commission to articulate its decision. This case is not settled. In the appeal, the county stated their evidence supported the county board's valuation of my home and requested the court provide guidance to the Property Tax Commission as to the weight and sufficiency of their evidence. The court declined the county's request. I believe the court was correct, as evidence does not add up to a market factor of 130%. David Francis said, "When the county appealed its laws to the Court of Appeals, only briefs were reviewed, so there was no need to pay Attorney Charles Meeker for that." Francis seems to be out of touch. Every document sent to the Court of Appeals was also mailed to me, and all were signed by Charles Meeker, including the county brief. Did Meeker offer his services for free? The court granted, Francis had said that several motions filed by King added to the county cost. The court granted my motion to include critical documents, including an omitted sale and a county comparable that decreased 30% after the property tax appeal. Motions were also filed due to Haywood County Attorney and lobbyist Leon Killian giving campaign contributions to one of the judges here in our case, which included a contribution after the judge was scheduled to hear our case. It's my opinion this was unethical and a major conflict of interest. U.S. Court of Appeals Fourth Circuit, Preston versus Leake, November 7th, 2011. Any payment made by a lobbyist to a public official, whether a campaign contribution, a simple gift, calls into question the propriety of the relationship, and therefore, North Carolina could rationally judge that it should ban all payments. As for Francis's diatribe about this being the only issue that I'm running on, he must not be wired to the public. I am a taxpayer too, and merely wish to exercise my rights. Hyatt's statement that the value the commission put on my house is halfway between the county's assessment and my figure is absolutely false. In my opinion, this was a political move by the Mountaineer and county officials to deceive the taxpayers of Haywood County in attempt to change the outcome of the upcoming election. Hyatt was correct with one statement. King is in for the long run. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else present care to speak? Okay. And we'll close the public comment session and move to constituent concerns. Bill, do you have anything?
I have none. I don't have any.
Mark, I just want to mention that the Haywood County Fair begins this week. It opens on Wednesday. You can, I think on Tuesday or tomorrow, they'll be taking, well, this don't air till Tuesday, so it doesn't matter. So, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday will be the Haywood County Fair this year, and I want to encourage the public to come to that. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention that I noticed, y'all, I know Kirk and Mark remember Paul Carden, who passed away a couple of weeks, last week, I believe. And Paul was the first chaplain that we had when we, when we passed our board rules to have prayer before our meetings. Paul Carden was the chaplain for the Sheriff's Department, and he was very faithful and made every meeting to, to open us up in prayer. And I just want to send condolences to his family. I know y'all do too. And I had seen him at a restaurant in Maggie Valley just a few weeks ago, and I didn't, and when I walked out, I wasn't paying attention, and he called to me, and I got to talk to him a little bit. I know he'd been battling cancer, but, and it really kind of hurt my feelings to see, you know, that he passed away. It'd only been maybe less than a month ago, so. But I just want to send condolences to his family, and I just wanted to let everybody know that, and thank him for his service to the county. He moved away from Haywood County and was not able to do or open our meetings anymore, but I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Okay.
I just want to take a moment to thank Crabtree Baptist Church for the folks down there inviting us to participate in their 200-year celebration yesterday morning. We, four of us were there, and it was a full house. I was able to present a flag that had flown at the Capitol Building, and it was just a really a great event and just a wonderful group of people and families and what all that church has meant for that community down there.
It was interesting looking at all the, the names of all the pastors who had led that church since the very early 1800s, and a lot of them, we had pictures of them. Taking a picture back in those days was serious business. They were, you didn't see many people smiling, so, but it was, it was a good time.
I believe it was 1814.
Yeah, 1814. Anything else? Okay. If not, then we'll move to administrative agency reports for our quarterly Smoky Mountain Center Fiscal Monitoring Report. Julie Davis.
Good evening. I'm bringing you once again the Smoky Mountain Center's Fiscal Monitoring Report. This is for June 30th, the end of their fiscal year. It is not audited and is subject to possibly change. But just to point out a few things, the actual revenues are $306,153,441. Actual expenditures, $281,394,284, which gives them a net increase in cash balance of $24,759,157.
Okay. Any questions, Julie? Okay, thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? We'll move then to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the August 4th, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Okay, if not, we'll move to the second item, which is the Order of Collection for the 2014 Taxes. We have David Francis with us, and David, you may want to respond to some of the comments made earlier in public.
Okay. The, concerning the neighborhood delineation being on the website, we reviewed the, how many times it had been hit or been used before we took those off, and at the time, there had only been one hit in the last month.
How much?
One hit in the last month. And we had to make space for the 2012 flood maps that were changed by FEMA, which was going to change people's insurance rates. And so we took that off and added the flood maps up there, which are in more heavily used each day, depending on floodways and flood plains than the neighborhood delineations.
I probably use those maps probably once a day.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I probably use those maps once a day."
Yeah.
And that information is available if somebody requested.
Yeah, you can get it, yeah. It's archived information, historical data, you can, you can retrieve it. Mrs. Parkins with the Land Records has that available, and you can do it that way. There's a little confusion about market factor, you know, it was last August, we went through that for about 30 minutes. We explained all that. Still don't know why the confusion's there.
At the end of the day, David, when someone gets the valuation of their property, that valuation is based as close to fair market value as possible. And the factors that Mr. Cave was talking about just build up to determining what the fair market value is, and then everyone's taxed the same rate with the exception of the different rates in the fire districts.
That, yeah, but what Mr. Cave's talking about is also is there's a market factor to bring markets up to 100% because there's, when you add the schedule of values and you plug all those numbers in there, sometimes the, the sales prices are higher than when you plug the schedule of values in there. So you have to create a market factor there to get there, to get everything up to 100% because that's the goal, is to capture 100% of the market, fair market value of the property at the time. That's the goal. And so that's why you'll have some that are positive and some that are negative in there as well, too.
Well, in any, any appraisal, private appraisals or whatever, all have market factors in it. It's all done that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's out there. And then the other thing, I mean, there's different areas of the county, and if this property's going to be more valuable in one place than it is in some other place. And as they say, location, location, location.
Yeah, and this is mass appraisal, and that's one of the tools. And, you know, other counties use market factors that may have a different name, but it's basically the same thing, so.
And, you know, this is a mass appraisal, you know, and I think the state maintains sales figures, and what's the, what's the average working out to for?
For?
How the sales are compared to the value?
I'm sorry, I mean, excuse me. For 2014, sales are roughly about 2% higher now than the tax value for 2014.
So the average home is selling for about 2% more than it's appraised for?
Right, yeah. It's still, you know, you can still see, you know, there's a little bit of roller coaster there. We had a slowdown in April. We had some numbers that came in in April, was looking at the multiple listing services that the realtors put out, and, you know, they, things were, you know, really below there, and things are picking back up again. It's, you know, it's when you sell property, you know, that's why, you know, we capture something in time. You know, we use the nine, 10 sales to capture 2011. You know, we're going to capture those, those sales, you know, for the last three years to when we do the 2017 appraisal. It's, this is something that's not static. It keeps moving. And that's what the revow does, is capture what the difference is between one revow to the next. When in 2002 and 2006, when the sales were 14 to 16% higher than the, than the county appraisals were at the time, you know, that's what we went back and captured that as well too. So things are different, and that's what we know. We'll look at all those sales. And the neighborhood delineation is help, is to put, you know, a smaller view on that instead of a bigger view. And before, you know, it was 17 communities, and, you know, now we're, you know, over, you know, 1,000, you know, neighborhoods, and this process that we are reviewing, we had started working on revow, and we've had a set back in our office, and due to a loss of a key member of our family there to a tragic health issue. And so we're having to buy up, you know, that and redo some things there. And so, but, you know, we'll continue working on that, and it'll be, you know, so the 11 maps are going, you know, be, the 14 maps are going to be a lot different than the 11 maps.
Well, the tax issues, it's often like Groundhog Day, it just keeps coming back up again every so often, same thing.
David, I have an experience back home, my mom died, my sister and I have a home, my old home place in Richmond County, you know, we're going to put up for sale. I look at the tax value, it's no way I'm going to sell it for that low tax value. I got to find out some way to work with the tax office in Richmond County to get it appraised at a higher rate. I didn't think that would ever happen, but I'll keep it forever rather than the low tax rate this rated at. So, I mean, it works for you, tax rate, and against you. In my case, it's working against me.
Okay. I guess we can go ahead with the Order of Collection.
Before you commissioners, is the Tax Collector's Order of Collection for Taxes for the 2014 tax year, which gives the tax collector the ability to file tax judgments, levy on sale, any real or personal property thereof, the taxpayers who have failed to do so. So what that gives the ability to do is do the attachments, the garnishments, and levy on personal property, and also to do tax judgments, which was the in-rem foreclosure method.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll continue on with the third item of the consent agenda.
David? Before you commissioners, you have the releases and refunds for the month of July. Nothing out of the ordinary to report there.
Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you. All right, the fourth item is a budget amendment. Julie Davis.
This is a capital project budget amendment for the school lottery fund. The, you'll remember, the school application came to you a few weeks ago for the roofing project at the Jonathan Valley Elementary School. Department of Public Instruction has approved the architecture fees of $13,000, so we're going to go ahead and put those in the budget so we can start paying for those fees, and then when the $220,000 construction piece gets approved by DPI, we'll bring that back to you.
Any questions?
Lottery funds.
Okay.
Chairman?
Any, yes?
The county just reminded me, we had not yet voted on the minutes, approving the minutes, so you might want to lump that into the...
No, we do that in the consent agenda. Any, any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to new business. First, we'll begin with the discussion of a consolidated waste services hauling contract. Recognize Ira Dove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have placed the first amended and restated hauling services agreement online, and you have it in your pack, it's available for inspection. I'm comfortable with the numbers, and in the practice of complete transparency at this time, would recommend that this contract have a little more chance to, that we have a little more chance to develop a PowerPoint, some information on financial vetting, so that that would be available to you, because this went out rather late. Also, with regards to this, Mr. Killian has reviewed it and may not be available at the next session, so just as to form, we put it here so that you would know that he reviewed it, and we'll be getting more information to you on the, the financial aspects.
Okay.
Yes, the, Mr. Francis gave me a rough draft of the numbers and the basic principles, and I put it into contract form, and I think it's, I think it's in good form.
We've, we've had a practice of, you know, presenting these various contracts and decisions made with solid waste, you know, in the, in the public domain ahead of time, and then having the ability to review PowerPoints and so forth to, or fully detail what's being, what's being considered. So unless there's some objection, we'll have, have that information in the interim to the commissioners, and then there'll be a PowerPoint at our next meeting.
Yes, that would be the anticipation, is to, to do that at the next meeting, yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll move to the second item. Again, Ira, this is for an engineering services.
Yes. We have a bundle, Lemons Engineering. A few, few weeks ago, at the last session, we heard a lot about what's happening at Francis Farm, and we learned that we would be needing an assessment of corrective measures. As part of that assessment of corrective measures, there's also a lot of testing, continued testing that would be done. And what you have before you is a proposal for an assessment of corrective measures, and it also includes the types of work that would be done with regards to the additional testing and the work with McGill Engineering to prepare the reports for Deener that we will need to be evaluated and get an approval on our plan on the landfill.
This is just another in a long series of expenses associated with the corrective action out there.
This is another in what will be a long and very big series of expenses, yes, unfortunately.
And the testing is groundwater, we have many wells out there that have to be, the tests have to be evaluated for, for Deener, migration of methane gas and, and so forth as well. So is there anything else you want to add to that, David?
With the assessment of corrective measures, is the actual, what we are going to submit to Deener, say, "Here's what we're going to do, and here's our plan." And, you know, part of that plan is from the last meeting that, you know, that we had concerning Francis Farm. We acquired the Shelton property today. We have secured, you know, basically a million dollars' worth of free dirt. So the corrective plan is going to include dirt, and that's what it's going, you know, it's going to take to do that whole cap there, and some of the other outlying areas on the cap will also include that whole measure and the scope of that, the slope, and everything like that. That's what the corrective measure plan will show and submit to Deener at that point. We have had preliminary conversations with them. Stevens went over there. BLE's had conversations with the person who reviews the Francis Farm landfill, and they are very happy and excited with the approach that the county's taking. They thought that it was a very, very good plan, just when, just discussing it with them, but this will, the ACM plan that BLE will, will do, will present it more formally that Deener can review at this point.
And the estimated fee?
It's $53,000.
Fifty-three. Okay. Any questions of Ira or David? Okay. If not, then would entertain a motion that the proposal from BLE Incorporated for Environmental Services at the Francis Farm landfill, as described, be approved.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Janus, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is approval of an application for state aid to our public library and permission for me to sign that application. We have Sharon Woodrow with us. Welcome, Sharon.
Hi. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to request approval for the application for state aid for a Haywood County public library.
We certainly wouldn't turn down any state aid for our library, I don't think so. Any questions, Sharon? Okay, if not, then would entertain a motion that the application for state aid be approved.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, the fourth item is the appointment of one member to the recreational advisory board from District Two, and a member also to the same board from District Five. Ira, these were the only folks who applied, is that correct?
In the one case on District Five, we have two applicants, but one was unable to be interviewed, and so we were not able to arrange that particular interview for you. So we will be doing the District Two, there was only one person who applied, and that was Michael Kalnacki.
Okay.
For District Two.
Okay, and the District Five is?
Will be on the, well, I, my apologies, we'll have to pull that to September.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
September 2nd arranged for, or September 15th, a night interview for you for the District Five.
Okay, so we're not going to appoint anybody to District Five tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so make a note of that on your agenda. And the name again of the person from District Two?
We have Michael Kalnacki. He is a retired educator, teacher counselor, middle school principal, and is very interested in physical education, and being a member of the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay.
He's actually the chairman right now.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. At this point, would entertain a motion that Mr. Kalnacki, is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Be appointed from District Two to the Recreation Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll conduct the interview next month for the District Five applicant. All right, and then the final item of new business is the appointment of three members to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments, ETJ. Ira?
In this particular case, you have three slots on the ETJ. There were four applicants, but only three lived within the ETJ, which is a requirement. So you have three viable applicants. You have Carl Jackson, who applied, and he is on the other business and civic experience. He's listed that he's with the Board of Directors of the Clyde Fire Department. You have Tom Stamey, who applied, and their addresses have been checked in their locations that they all do live within the ETJ area. Tom Stamey, he's on the Clyde Board of Zoning and Adjustments presently, and would like to continue serving. And then you have William Osborne, he's presently on the Clyde Board of Zoning Adjustment, works with the Lions Club, and would like to continue serving. So those are your applicants who live within the territory.
Okay. Any questions? If not, would entertain a motion that Carl Jackson, Thomas Stamey, and William Osborne be appointed to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments in the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.
You know, they have a combined, did you notice that they have a combined residency in Haywood County of 228 years?
We need to probably improve our outreach and get some experienced folks.
Mr. Osborne's been in Haywood County for 87 years.
87. That concludes the new business. At this point, entertain a motion that we enter into closed session for purposes of attorney-client privilege under authority of General Statute 143, 318.11A3, and personnel, General Statute 143, 318.11A6.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, thank you. Return from closed session, is there any other business for the board? If not, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.